All right, we'll call a meeting to order. And wish everyone a happy new year to staff, administration council and all of our residents. Changes to the agenda, I have two that we need to add in, one would be nine point five. It's in your package on all net, but it's not on the paper here, White Ash Road, potable water request. And the other one that I'm going to add in is under. I don't know whether to put it under consent agenda, it's a little. Proposed, I'm proposing a letter to Minister Coppin regarding red alerts on the ambulance service, so I'm not sure where the best. Best place, oh, it is on this one, all right. Guess I've got an out of date. Agenda, the other one is a letter I'm proposing. So I would just put it under memos if that's okay, so nine point one letter to Minister Coppin on red alerts on ambulance service. Any other? Additions to the agenda?
I can accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, Murray gives a motion to accept the agenda as it's been amended, all in favor. Carried and we'll go right to our first delegation of the day. Shannon Frank, who is the executive director of the Old Man Watershed Council, before we get started, Shannon, we'll just start over here. And introduce everybody in the room and then you can take over and introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Brian Hildebrand, Council Division Three, it's Grassley Lake area.
Join the group from Hayes, who's on the council before Asian.
John Tricatola, Division Two, South Tabor.
Merrill Harris, Division One, which is south and west of Tabor.
Shantel Quasen, Division Seven, Vauxhall area.
Murray Reynolds, Division Six, in January.
Tamara Mianega, Tabor, north to the old man.
Arlos Croft, CIO with the MD of Tabor with Jared Brown, municipal intern with the MD of Tabor.
Awesome, thank you, good morning, nice to see everybody again and some new faces that I haven't met before. As Meryl said, my name's Shannon, I've been with the Old Man Watershed Council for quite a long time, so I've seen some of you over the years. And John was on our board before, so. Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a bit of an update on what we've been working on. You will be receiving in the mail probably this week, our annual report and a copy of our annual letter of request. So each year, we ask all municipalities in the Old Man Watershed for forty seven cents per resident. As a voluntary donation. And we also ask irrigation districts for a donation and so. Most have been doing that for many years and I want to thank you for all the donations that you have given over the years. We're sixteen years old this year, I believe, so. It's been been a lot of wonderful donations from the municipalities and the irrigation districts. So yeah, you'll be receiving that shortly and. Happy to answer any questions that you have, next slide please. So a quick reminder about what a watershed is, I know it's not a word that most of us use every day. So it's just all of the land that drains into a common body of water through the many creeks and rivers. So in this case, I'm talking about the entire Old Man Watershed, next slide. Which it looks like this, so it's kind of an irregular shape because it's the natural hills. Of the landscape and all this land eventually drains into the Old Man River through its tributaries. So. Obviously you can see where where Tabor is on the eastern edge and we cover this whole area, it's about twenty eight thousand square kilometers that we work in. Next slide, please. So I'll tell you a little bit about us, for those of you that are new to the Old Man Watershed Council and. This is a picture of one of the things that we do a lot of, which is staking willows along a creek bank. To restore a damaged area, reinforce. The bank so it doesn't erode and creates healthy habitat for fish and wildlife. Our next slide, please. So our vision is a healthy resilient watershed where people, wildlife and habitat thrive. And we're, our mission is to be a collaborative forum for all voices, so it's really important to us and. Like you, we have to always think about the three pillars, so the next slide is the. You know, what what used to be called Environment, Society and Economy, now a lot of people say Planet, People and Profits, but it's the same concept and. As you know, it's not always easy to find the right mix of that, but we're, you know, doing our best to to. Always have all three in mind, next slide, please. We're one of eleven watershed planning and advisory councils in Alberta, so there is. One for each major river and one lake, the Lesser Slave Lake. So these were actually started to be set up in the early two thousands because of issues that were happening around. Drought in two thousand, two thousand one, you'll remember, most of you, how we had the bad drought. And also concerns about water quality. Particularly in our watershed was around the Battersea Drain area and there's been a lot of work to improve the water quality there and it is improving. So we were kind of the breeding ground, if you will, for water issues and the province wanted to make sure that there was. A collaborative group of people working on on practical solutions and also having a strong local voice. That could advise the government of Alberta on these issues and so. Next slide, please, the Watershed Council started to be set up, we officially incorporated in two thousand five, but we've been around. Kind of informally for a long time before that and we're set up as a forum. So we have nineteen seats from all sectors and. It's really important to us that we have. All of the voices at the table and so that's why there's there's so many seats and on the next slide, you will see. Some of our current groups that are filling the seat, so there's, you know, one for each level of government, one for each First Nation. Health, irrigation. And then there's three for municipalities, so one for the city, one for rural municipalities and one for towns and villages. So currently Randy Bullock, the Riva Cardston County fills the rural municipality seat. And those are elected at mayors and reeves. So. You certainly have a voice at the table and I encourage you to talk to Randy or me or, you know, the chair is Doug Kulp from the city of Westbridge. If you have any questions or concerns ever, we're happy to listen and learn from you and and work on on issues of concern for you. So yeah, this is a snapshot of kind of who's on our board at the moment and I won't go through every seat, but there's kind of one trying to. Bring a perspective from every sector. And so you can be an individual member. As well, I encourage you to sign up as an individual member, it's free and it automatically renews now, so you don't have to do it every year. And then the MD can also be a member and appoint somebody to vote at our annual general meeting. Next slide, please. So we've, we've been wrestling kind of with what does it mean to be neutral with all of the coal debate that happened over the last year. Though there, there was a lot of contention around that and people were. Well, then they always are, right, some people think that we're not environmental enough and some people think we're too environmental and. You know, there's always this, you can't please everybody thing going on and so we try really hard to be non biased, focus on science and. You know, and so we, we started to realize that we should start. Talking about being neutral and that we're proud to be neutral and that, you know, that's not a drawback, that's actually our greatest strength because. What it means is that we can maintain trust with people and that they know when we're sharing information. And we're speaking on behalf of our community that, you know, they can, they can rely on that information, they know we don't have a, an agenda or a. Some like secret in our, you know, like we are just sharing the information and allowing decision makers like you and other levels of government. To make the decisions based on some of the information that we provide. And, you know, we don't take sides, we're not making decisions, we're just providing information and perspectives and so. Yeah, so we're really kind of excited about this and we're going to be talking a lot more about it in the future, especially with all the watershed councils across Alberta. About how, you know, we are proud to be neutral and we don't see it as a drawback and we're not going to apologize for it, so. Next slide, please, I'll, I'll move on to some of our project highlights from the past year. This is a photo of us at. One of our training sessions that we were learning how to take samples of Bentec invertebrates. And so we started this new project. Where we're actually monitoring the health of our creeks, we started in the mountains where we do a lot of our work in the headwaters and. We, we did seven sites this year and I think we did six last year, our goal is to do about six or seven every year so that we have some good. Data on the health of our creeks. And this is kind of the. Top of the line benchmark, like we, for taking Bentec invertebrate samples is considered, you know, the way to go and we were using a federal protocol. And. It's also happens to be lots of fun, we get to go outside and spend our arm fall up in the mountains taking samples, so it's always lots of fun and. Then we have to send the bugs off to a lab and they actually count all the bugs and they identify all the species and then that helps. Paint a picture of how healthy the creek is. So that's one of our new projects, our next slide, please. I mentioned coal and we, we spent a lot of time sharing information with. Decision makers and the public on issues like coal last year. We participated on the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada review process for the environmental impact assessments, we gave a presentation, provided a written submission. We did the same with the Coal Policy Committee, sharing information, giving a presentation, that sort of thing and publicly. And the, the point I wanted to make with, with some of this legislation and policy stuff is that we're not just sharing science, again, we're. Trying to share the voice of the community as well and, you know, sometimes it's. There's not a consensus and there's diverse views and so we just say that, you know, we, we share what we're hearing. The photos here are to give you a bit of idea of, of some of the folks that we're, we have partnerships with that we're talking to. So Apisumaka or Running Teori is from Kana Nation and he's a. Knowledge keeper is always sharing lots of, of information and expertise with us. So we do have strong partnerships there and then I'm, some of you I'm sure know the guy on the, on the other photo, Kyle Gao, so he's an irrigation farmer in, in your MD. And, you know, so we're making sure that we're also sharing and hearing and learning from those on the ground that are. You know, make telling us what we need to share with government, so we try to do both. We also have seats on lots of committees, like government committees, like the AER has a multi stakeholder engagement and advisory committee. Alberta Water Council, the South Saskatchewan River Basin Integrated Water Coordination Committee and so on. I won't get into all that, but as a partner of the government, we, we do have seats on a lot of these committees that we. Provide information to and give advice to. Next slide, please. I mentioned some of our sampling in the headwaters and. The other part of that work is a lot of education, so we're on the ground talking to backcountry recreationists every summer. We encourage them to steer clear of water. Using different educational activities, signs, etc. Last summer, we spoke to one thousand seven hundred and sixty eight people in person in the backcountry face to face. And we also completed two hundred and eighteen surveys to help evaluate how their behaviors are changing over time. So we thought we can track if our methods are working. And. It's been really good, like we. When we started this project, I don't know, it was probably six or seven years ago, people thought we were insane. That we were just going to like walk around the backcountry and talk to people about, you know, environmental stuff and putting out their fire and. Like people thought, oh, you're going to get shot or, you know, it's going to be dangerous and. And it's been great, people love talking to us and soon as they realize that we're not government, they're happy to chat. And, and we have seen, we've learned a lot about like how people. Are changing their behaviors and they are. Seeing and helping restore the damage, like we, a lot of what we do is willow staking along the creek banks and planting trees and shrubs. And like a lot of them, we, we ask them to come and help, so we want them to feel invested in that and. And a lot of people do, so it's, it's been really good and we planted, I think, twenty five hundred willows last fall and will. That's a lot. It, it takes many hours to plant willows, it's because you have to stake them into the ground by hand, so you have to use like a hand pounder thing and. But it's really good and it's really rewarding when you see them go back and they do a great job protecting the stream banks. Next slide, please. Our Watershed Legacy Program has been going on for over ten years now and we celebrated our seventieth project this year, so that was exciting. So this is the project that really focuses on rural stewardship and investing in producer led projects. So a lot of producers apply for funding for riparian management fencing or offstream watering units. To keep their cattle away from waterways during sensitive times. Create riparian pastures, that sort of thing. So you can see in the photos is one example of a watering trough and this one was, is in the, in the foothills and the porcupine hills and. It's so clean that we were just drinking right out of it, that made a great picture, so that's kind of our goal is to make sure that. You know, as much as possible, a lot of our water is, is clean enough to drink and. That's really exciting when we can do that, so. As you can see from the diagram there, the infographic, we've, we've helped keep thousands of. Livestock, bison and sheep away from our waterways during sensitive periods and. We'll supported weed pools. Wetland restoration, bio control of invasive species, that sort of thing, so anyone can apply to this project. For funding and I encourage you guys to do so as well, we get a lot of applications that are. You know, from our egg service board, folks supporting a local producer, last year, the, actually the Tabor Irrigation District got funding for a solar watering unit. To support the producers around their. Reservoir so that they could better manage cattle access. Next slide, please. So we, we do have strong partnerships with our indigenous communities, we've been doing a lot of. To support assessments, so range health assessments of grasslands, riparian health assessments of, of streams and wetlands. And they've been doing a lot of that, also native fish DNA sampling and monitoring. On their, up in the mountains that they've been doing, so we've been supporting that and staking willows together along. Waterways on the, the First Nations land. Supporting theirs, they have a seed collection project on Khan, Ghana, Kana Nation. That's to trying to preserve the native plants that they use for medicines and for food. So we, yeah, we've been supporting that work and, and working side by side and we've been applying for grants together to continue that work, so. We're really, really proud to work with them and there's a lot happening on. The nations that a lot of people don't know about, but they're actually doing a lot of great work. Next slide, please. We do have a bunch of youth education activities that are kind of ongoing. These are photos of some of the activities that we lead, like hands on educational. Programs where they learn about bugs and. Sediment and. Fish and on all sorts of things, so we really try to focus on that kind of hands on learning. We do virtual presentations and in, in classroom presentations as well, but they're always linked to something kind of hands on. And that's really important. Sometimes it's a struggle lately with to get into classrooms, so if you know anyone, please spread the word, we. It's been hard with COVID and everything, but we still want to keep doing this and we're doing as much as we can virtually, if, you know, they're not comfortable having us in person. But a lot of times we go outside, so that helps. Next slide, please. And then last project I want to touch on is one of our newest projects, so we're just starting this one, it's called uniting rural producers and urban consumers. And it's all about. Bringing people together so that they are building relationships and trust, we've found. There's a kind of a lack of knowledge about where food comes from, how it's grown, there's concerns around. GMOs, we hear, think pesticides, things like that, and so we're helping share information, helping people. I've like separate fact from, from fiction and things that they might see on Netflix or in the news. That aren't happening here that are actually, you know, far, far away or not existent, so. This is really about helping engage urban people in where their food comes from. And it's really showcasing what producers are doing in, on our watershed in terms of stewardship and restoration. So it's going to involve. A video series with producers, we've filmed three so far and we're just getting those edited and ready for viewing. And then there's going to be written articles and in person events, so hopefully this summer we'll be having a bunch of in person events with producers and getting. Giving urban people an opportunity to connect directly with producers, so. We're really excited about this, this one's funded through the CAT program. And I think it's going to be really good and hopefully will make a big difference for building that trust in those relationships. Between rural and urban people, because we, like, we don't like to spend time on finger pointing and blame and who's contributing more nutrients or whatever to the water. We just like to focus on solutions and like, let's all do our part. So next slide. Please. Now, so please keep in touch, as I mentioned, you can be a member and that it's automatically renews now for individuals, so that's a lot easier. We do have an e-newsletter, we have a website and we're on all these social media channels and sometimes I email you guys directly, you. If you're, if I have your email, some of them are on the municipal affairs website, so I, like, we update our list, but if I, if you haven't been getting emails from me. I would appreciate having your email, I don't send them all, all the time, just like if there's a big opportunity coming up. That I don't want you to miss. Our next slide, please. And this is just a beautiful picture where the old man meets the Bow River on a nice calm, clear day. And the water just looks perfect and then it becomes the South Saskatchewan River and flows all the way to Lake Winnipeg and out to Hudson's Bay, so. We're at the top and we're doing our best to keep it clean for everybody. But yeah, I'd happy to take your questions.
Hey, anybody have any questions?
I have one, it's more around the mine and mitigation strategy that the government must have in place for. Different contaminants, selenium and others, I'm sure that's been shared, has it been shared with the Watershed Council? Because I, I know that there, we have pretty tough environmental standards when it comes to water use and. Things of that nature in Alberta. And I'm just wondering if they've shared that with you, what the mitigation strategy is, or is there any concern by the Watershed Council with mines at headwaters?
Yes, so there was, there certainly is concerns that we were hearing from our. Members and our community and also from the science that we, we did a lot of research into what is possible. And the, the real challenge with selenium is that there just isn't a. Perfect solution that exists, like, we don't know how to treat it. And so it's not really a question of, of the standards, it's more a problem of technology and not being able to treat it properly. Like tech in Sparwood there that, you know, it's been operating for decades and they've invested. Hundreds of millions of dollars, probably closing in on a billion dollars, I don't know the exact number, but. And they still don't have a good. Solution in place, they've been really struggling to treat that water. And they built several water treatment plants, they've, you know, done lots of field scale experiments to try and find that solution and. So far, it's kind of eluding us and so that was kind of the primary concern. In general, in terms of what are like affluent regulations are called. There, yeah, there, there isn't one for selenium. The federal government has been working on one, but it's still in draft and it hasn't been released and there's that been quite a bit of pushback on it like. That it would. Really hinder the coal sector, so it's kind of been slow, but generally. How it works is the, the coal companies propose their own mitigation strategies as part of the impact assessment process. And, you know, they have to try and prove that, that they will be able to mitigate those impacts and so the real, the concern. With their impact assessment was that they were saying, you know, we'll find a way, we don't know what the way is, but we'll, you know, try to find a way of like tech is doing. And that's where a lot of people were concerned that, you know, that, that we take that risk of to approve it not and having that. Way in existence.
So I guess a follow up to that is my understanding, the tech has come up with some better strategies that have reduced some of the selenium. Not completely eliminated selenium being moved past their mind, but has come up with some stuff that's quite. A lot better than it has been in the past, the problem being that because it's accumulated so much in that lake. That it's going to be able to take a long, long time to get it down to acceptable levels. But I think what they're releasing now is well within acceptable standards or are there acceptable standards for selenium, I guess it's a better question.
Okay, yeah, so there are. Guidelines for what is safe for cattle, for crops and for humans and. And for the aquatic environment, so fish and, and so fish are typically impacted first, they can only handle two micrograms. Per liter of selenium in the water. Cattle, I think, is twenty and crops, I think, is around thirty depending on the crop and humans are fifty. Right now, some people think that should be changed, but so we actually have a better tolerance than our, our cattle and our crops. And there has been some studies also showing that if cattle are eating crops and drinking water that has selenium in it, it gets. What's the word, like it becomes more and more over time and then it can be really bad for cattle, so there's a concern about that, of course. Being that we have a huge cattle industry, so yeah, there are guidelines, tech. My understanding is that there, it certainly has improved, like the technologies has, is showing a lot of promise and they are able to reduce it. In their field scale experiments, but they're having trouble scaling that up to the full mine size. And so when they try to, like, say, if you were taking samples from, they probably, I would estimate they have around ten sites where it. Is pumped out into the, a creek or a river, if you test. If you tested all ten of those, you know, um some of them would pass and some of them would fail. And so again, it it's a, yeah, it's a question of how. How much, how big is the mine? How much affluent is it producing and what is the concentration? Yeah, like Ten Mountain also proposed uh like a three-stage process that involved treatment. Settlement uh and wetlands. And they thought, you know, that that would really help. Um but again, it it's, it's kind of experimental, I guess. And so there needs to be more time to prove that. It won't accumulate in the environment. Which means in fish, in humans, in cattle. It's not like nebulous in the environment, it's in us.
Okay, any other questions for Shannon? Are those the forty-seven cents per capita? Have we, has that been paid? That was in the budget, wasn't it?
I'd have to refer that to Brian Bedura. In terms of uh budgeting for the membership, mem- municipal membership in the, in the council. Brian, are you able to look that up real quick or know what we've done from the past years?
Yes, uh I'm I'm looking that up uh currently as we speak.
Geographically, a portion of the M D is in the southeast Alberta Water Shed Alliance as well, I I believe.
Um if I can uh add, what we've done in the past is uh. We had been uh a member and paying membership fees uh uh since two thousand nine. To the Old Men uh Watershed Council. However, the last time uh we maintained our membership was two thousand nineteen. So in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, uh we hadn't uh been members.
Okay, I guess we'll have to have that discussion. All right, any other questions for Shannon? Okay, we appreciate very much coming, your coming and enlightening us again on what the Old Man Watershed Council is and what they do and the activities that they're involved in. And if there's no more questions. Again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for your time this morning and have a great day.
Betcha, thanks.
Bye.